May, will you start grating when they're ready with batteries?
Yes. I just changed most of them out, so they... Is that what happened? Yeah, yours was one that I didn't change.
I too. I heard...
Maybe I just won't say anything else.
Well, I don't know the status of all trees.
I talked to the group about somewhere...
Bush, Bush?
I don't know.
For the cemetery, so... Yeah, I didn't...
Light comes on, but the... Hello, yeah, that's working. Turn it down.
Yeah, it must be a battery issue.
Hello.
This one.
Hello. Yep.
I think everybody's going now.
I call to order the meeting of the Mont Eagle, Tennessee mayor and alderman, November 24th, 2025. It's 5:00 PM Central Time. If you would, please stand for the prayer.
Mr. Perry, our father, we thank you again this afternoon for an opportunity to come together and conduct the business of the town of Mont Eagle. We're grateful for the town we live in, and we thank you for the community that is around us, and first responders, fire department, and EMS people, and our police force that continue to look after us around the clock. And we're just grateful for these things. We thank you for the opportunity to help out and try to make decisions that have benefited Shulte all involved, and we just trust that you'd help us to make those decisions correctly and continue to lean on thee for guidance and direction and the purpose we have to conduct business. In Jesus' name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Sam. Sam.
Yes, here.
Grant.
Here.
Sam.
Preston.
Here. Who is that? Boy. Maybe we should turn things down a little bit. Was that Chief? Was that Chief Ray?
I don't think it was. Turn me that a little bit.
Scared the heck out of me.
Yeah. That's like the phantom that was here six months ago and we had such a hard time getting that.
All right, you've taken the role. We have a quorum. You've received the minutes in your packet. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minister, approve. You've received the minutes of the beer board meeting of October 27th in your packet. I'll accept a motion to accept those minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion to accept the beer board package.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections as submitted? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You have any other minutes? Okay, let's move on to citizens' comments. Any citizens wish to be heard at this time?
Officer, I do. Mayor, this is an open meeting. It's open to the public.
Yeah.
Is there any reason why there's a citizen here that couldn't come into the meeting?
Not that I know of. What happened? What's the point?
Well, I'm just asking. They said it's open meeting, but everyone is invited. Everyone should be able to come through the door.
Yes, there are residents.
Okay, but it is okay. I just wanted to ask that question.
Any other citizen comments which to be heard? Okay. I have a couple of things. Before I get to the events, I have a proclamation that was prepared. I'd like to read it this time. Proclamation honoring the life and service of Alexander Lex Orr the Fourth. Whereas Alexander Lex Orr the Fourth, a devoted public servant, community leader, and beloved citizen of Mont Eagle, Tennessee, passed away on October 21st, 2025, surrounded by his family at the age of 87. And whereas born on November 8th, 1937, in Miami, Florida, to Beatrice Smith Orr and Alexander Orr III, Lex spent his childhood summers at his grandparents' home in Mont Eagle Sunday School Assembly, a place that became the heart of his lifelong connection to this mountain community. And whereas Lex came from a long line of civic-minded leaders whose legacy of service extended from Glasgow, Scotland, to Miami, Florida, his great-grandfather, Alexander Orr, serving as mayor of Miami in the 1930s, and his family contributing to the city's development and water infrastructure. And whereas, after attending Baylor School in Chattanooga, where he played revelry each morning on his trumpet, Lex continued his education at the University of Florida. And whereas Lex made Mont Eagle his home and gave tarassee to its people, serving as manager of the Mont Eagle Sunday School Assembly from 1986 to 1997, president of the Mont Eagle Rotary Club, president of the Mont Eagle Chamber of Commerce, and as alderman and vice mayor of the town of Mont Eagle for six years. And whereas Lex's professionalism, leadership, service, and deep affection for this mountain community helped strengthen the civic, cultural, and spiritual life of Mont Eagle, leaving an enduring mark on the town he dearly loved. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and board of aldermen of the town of Mont Eagle, Tennessee, that Alexander Lex Orr the Fourth is hereby honored and remembered for his service, leadership, and dedication to the betterment of this community, adopted this 24th day of November, 2025, by the mayor and board of aldermen of the town of Mont Eagle, Tennessee. So without objection. The beach alderman would sign and return those two minutes. He'll give one to the family and one will be a part of our records. Okay. Couple of things coming up in town. First of all, we have the parade, December 6th. We form at 2:30 at the flea market. We've been forming for parades, and we step off at 3:30. Please make sure any group that you know of registers so we know who's coming and how to line them up. There'll be a tree lighting this Saturday, the 29th, at 5:30 at Harton Park. I see trees going up already. We've had 15 or 17?
Seventeen.
Seventeen trees given by participating folks that wanted to address our greenway. Also, on the day of the parade, starting at 9 o'clock, there'll be a Christmas bazaar here at the community, here at City Hall. And that goes till 4 o'clock or whenever the vendors leave. But it'll be a Christmas bazaar, as I believe we've had in the past from time to time. And I believe... I believe that's it as far as my announcements. I just wish, I'm sure from the aldermen as well as myself, wish you all a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. So let's enjoy this week. That's it for my communications and calendar of events. Let's move on to reports. Police Department?
Sergeant Carter, I had a feeling for Chief Rayline had a family emergency today. That's why I'm gonna do his report for the year. Yearly total calls for service is 3,299, which is up by 882 calls from the year prior. The total number of arrests was 56. Nineteen percent of those were drug-related. Total number of county assists, this includes Grundy, Marion, and THP, were 69. Total number of reports was 145. Total number of crashes was 51. And I have a brief statement. This is from the chief. I'm just reading his report for the month. Says, "As I took over as chief in January 2023, over the last three years, the police department has trended down in arrests and crashes. I would like to think that this is a direct result of the police presence. My goal in 2023 was to be aggressive and send a message that Mont Eagle is not a place to peddle drugs or race up and down the roads. We have had a 38% reduction in crashes from year 2023 to 2025. Calls for service are up from 2023 to 2025 by 1,148 calls of service from the 911 dispatch center. This can be related to the increase in traffic, town growth, more people visiting the town of Mont Eagle. In summary, my goal is for the town of Mont Eagle Police Department to continue to grow with the citizens to get more efficient of community policing." See what else we got here. All right. And he also wanted me to state, as far as the chain of command goes and Mont Eagle Police Department goes, Chief Rayline and myself, Sergeant Carter on patrol, Sergeant Gus Raby, who's over training, evidence, and compliance with the state. We have Patrolman Vest, Patrolman Chadlock, Patrolman Cross. We have new officers. Name's Officer Dalton. He's one of the people in now. And we have Patrolman Richardson. The shift coverage list is one officer from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. One officer, and these are four rotations, so two different rotations. One officer from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And one officer from 6:00 AM, or 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Mont Eagle Police Department is currently operating with eight people. Chief went back and counted the staff for prior three chiefs before him, and it was the same number. This is the minimum. The minimum number we can effectively and safely have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365 coverage. Anything less than this will most certainly increase overtime. Remember, we must cover vacations, sick days, and court days. We cannot count on county departments to cover our city. Their call volume has increased as has ours, and some are unfortunately understaffed. And that's all I got right now. Can I mention a comment earlier? The reason why subject wasn't allowed here is due to a court order. There's no, no one's getting turned away from there. This court order has an effect for a city employee, which is not, doesn't allow them to be here.
Okay, thank you.
That's that.
Any questions from the aldermen on the police report? Okay, thank you.
Great.
Fire Department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Guess I'm unprepared because I didn't do my year-end report, so I can make up some numbers in line to you, so I'm just saying I forgot it. Anyway, 27 calls for the month. We finally received all of our items from the 2023 CDBG grant. Those items include 15 sets of bunker gear, 15 sets of wildland extrication gear, complete loadout of ISO requirements with fans, saws, thermal imaging cameras, and hand tools for the ladder truck, gear washer and dryer, a 2025 3500 series four-door 4x4 brush truck with a fire skid unit, and a 2025 2500 four-door 4x4 chief support truck with a topper and a command box. So that was a pretty good grant. I think that grant, if you can correct me, is around $300,000. I think our share was around $28,000, $30,000, somewhere in there. So, pretty nice score. Eight new members and eight existing members received their vehicle extrication research and certifications over the last weekend. Thanks to Jason Ikerd and Ikerd Towing from Pell, and we went down to their junkyard and done all of our junkyard work. And some boat runners provided a telehammer so we could move the vehicles around, and we greatly appreciate that. Burn permit season. I forgot to mention it last month. We're in October 15th and May 15th, so we're in burn permit season. So if you're doing any outdoor burning, BurnSafetyN.org. It's not like it used to be. Now there's an 877 number. 877350BURN is the number for to obtain a permit, or you can go online to Tennessee Forestry's page at BurnSafetyN.org. If you're doing outdoor burning, just stay with your fire, and you know, if it gets out of control or whatever, just call 911 and we'll come and help you with it. Questions on fire?
Any questions on fire from the aldermen? Thank you.
Yes, sir. AJ's out. He had a doctor's appointment this evening. He's not made it back yet. I'm going to go into codes. There's one property maintenance issue that's been resolved. Actually, the house sold. It was over on Forest Point. There's one more that's remaining on it that we're working with. So that's going to be resolved. There's two other properties in the process for further retention and compliance for cleanup. I think those properties are on West and over by the cemetery. That's been noted. So we've been working on it. Homeless and tent camping, PD wants to throw into this. They can. So we've had several complaints with the homeless folks. We, I think one day last week, we spent a whole day chasing back and forth. We went everywhere from the flea market to North Bluff and all over. I think there was, we shook three people out on that one and moved three people. So the only thing that I can say is, is one of the tents is over off of North Bluff is on private property. You know, so me as an ordinance officer, the only thing I can do is tell them that tent camping is prohibited unless it's a bona fide campground. That's what is coming to the municipal ordinance. So, you know, you move them on from that occasion, but at the same token, it's on private property, so it's going to have to have a property owner result in a trespass, and that's going to go to a criminal side for law enforcement to move them off the property. We did move those people on regardless and just told them they needed to chew on and find elsewhere. So we know it's a problem. We've been in contact with the flea market and the property owner at the flea market. That's upcoming, so hopefully we can shake some people that's living in the flea market exhibit booths out of the flea market. Hopefully that'll be a peaceful resolution for that. Questions on that? Questions on codes or anything?
John, is on the encampment, so is that the reason that they cleared all the brush behind Circle K and stuff?
So that's phase one of the booth property. I think you're talking behind that. So phase one of that, that's just kind of they decided they were going to clear the land. That has helped a lot. I think there were six or seven encampments that we found back there. And that's all vacant now. All those people dispersed. But this other side of that is, is we knew where they were at. They were isolated to that area, so now they're going to disperse elsewhere.
Right.
So it's just if you see them or you encounter them, let us know. Call, you know, let PD know, let me or AJ know, and we'll make note of it and try to, I mean, those folks have rights too as well. We'll try to accommodate them as best as we can and see where we can move them to and come up with a solution for them.
So that wasn't the purpose of the clearing?
No. No. I gotta ask if Mont Eagle was burning out the homeless people. My question is, the answer is no. That's phase one of the property. Phase two is a city right of way for a city easement to go across the property to gain access to our pump stations behind Mountain Inn.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So. And then ultimately, the owners have expressed an interest in developing it one day, but this was phase one of that development process, as the chief stated.
Yep, correct. So let's go on to the Mountain Inn. So the Mountain Inn had several complaints and phone calls about the Mountain Inn. The Mountain Inn came to court last week. I spoke to Judge Rains about it. Judge Rains assessed the fine on the Mountain Inn property. There's been no positive commencement of remediating the building or anything. It remains the same. The property owner didn't show up for court. Further in this, as it go after the holidays, I'll serve them to a notice for a hearing for condemnation of the building, and I'm going to seek demolition of the building. I mean, that's the only thing that I see physically fit. So I spoke to mayor, and it'll probably, you know, also require our city attorney to have some input on that side of it, and we'll move forward for demolition. This is the first time Mont Eagle's ever had to deal with that, but we're going to cross that bridge.
And then we'll have a lien on the property?
Yes, I'm seeking a lien on the property for the city to be reimbursed on the demolition, whatever we end up going about. It's kind of a learning curve for me, so there's no previous work that I can look at or anything. We're just kind of learning as we go.
Any other questions for the building inspector?
On this issue, you will have a plan to put in force as soon as you receive the green light for the demolition? I mean, you'll already have a sequence there that you're going to get bids or?
Yes, I, so, I mean, I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole, but Judge Rains kind of called me off to the side and let me know of our municipal ordinance, and I, so, and I hate to sound like a dictator standing here, but the hearing, I am the hearing officer. So I'll call a notice for a hearing for the property owner. They'll sit down. The city attorney will sit on the city side to represent the town. We'll listen to the hearing and make a decision whether we're going to go for remediation on the property or demolition on the city side. I'm seeking demolition period. I mean, we've dealt with it for a year now. December 12th will be a year that you folks had to look at it, that our visitors had to look at it getting off the interstate. It's long enough. So they've had plenty of time. That's my hearing.
The remediation part is only if it's 50% or less?
Yes, that's right. So that's under the state code. If it's 50% or less, right, then they can remediate. If it's 50% or greater cost on the AIAs, then yes, we'll move for demolition. But the case 22 to that is, is that building has to be brought to compliance of the 2021 standard international building code. So being a hotel motel is going to require sprinklers and everything. So I can, I'm making the assumption that we're already over 50% based on the modernization.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so that, the assumption you made is the way this works, that they have had now a year to give you better numbers to work off of?
Yes.
And they have failed to do that?
So this comes back, I mean, giving them the benefit of the doubt. They had six months per city ordinance to clean the building up or do something with the building, right? Then they presented to the VZA, if you remember, they was trying to make a micro-tell and put kitchenettes in that. VZA was unanimous no vote. So I'm going back to July was when that took place. I feel like that's fair, because they did have an open cash with the city. So from July to present, I mean, the six months depleted on the allowance. That's just the way I take that, yes. I've gotten one document that was presented the last court date, which was, what's July, September, September, I guess, court date, that they had an engineering assessment done. The engineer deemed that the building was bid. That's basically all it says, so.
Fit for what?
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I see. Parks and Recreation? You want to do it now? Whatever. Yeah, that's fine.
I'm not parksing, right?
No, but.
I just have two.
You brought a lot of Christmas trees onto the greenway.
Does this work? Does this work? Just two things. You heard the mayor talk about the Christmas bazaar. I have a handout to give to the alderman and the mayor, and the rest to those who are here. And then the lighting of the trees on Saturday. This is something new. We're going to try and get a new community event. We'll have some Christmas caroling and light up the greenway. So not just the trees, but the figures that are there. And we've got lights around the tree trunks, and we hope it's going to make everybody feel good.
What time is that?
5:30. And... Is there anything else, mayor, that I need to?
This coming Saturday.
Yeah, this coming Saturday.
This coming Saturday. It's Saturday after Thanksgiving, so that the lights can be up starting December 1st.
Any other questions? Is there more?
Please, please, please go by and see the trees. Grant and his wife have put up a tree. Iva and her family are putting up a tree. Linda's done two trees, so.
Just a quick thank you to Virginia Curry and to you, Martha Ann, for putting that together. We've got, I think last year we ended up with six trees maybe in the little corner down here or something. And this year we're up to 17, don't we?
Seventeen trees.
Which is really great, so people were, I think, complaining in years past about lights, and now we've got trees and lights and all kinds of other things, so take a look at it and enjoy it. Thank you for doing that.
Martha Ann, does that conclude your report?
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
Thank you. Utility manager? John, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Any aldermen have any questions on utility?
There's a lot of information in our packet there from Travis.
Yes, we'll be getting to that, as you see on the agenda farther down under New Business.
Okay.
Any other questions for utility? There's nothing from the Street Department?
Yeah, I got a couple.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir. I had a call from a lady about the streetlights out on Laurel Lake. And I think there was somebody in the audience a couple of months ago asked, came in at the meeting and stated they were having problems with the street lighting and they deemed it, thought it was a safety issue. And I think at the time, you can see the last month or month before last, we told them we would turn those into Sequoia Valley for repair. Has that been done?
Yes, what we had was turned into Sequoia Valley. I received an email from a resident. I contacted Sequoia Valley. We're getting a list of the addresses and locations, and we'll forward that to Sequoia, and I will follow that up.
Can you add to the list, the corner of Third and King and Ford and King? Both of those lights are out as well.
Yeah, I think we need to have a short discussion on remedy. I mean, right now, people just have to call in and say the light is out? Is that how it works now?
That would probably be the best, if we get an exact location.
I surveyed them all two years ago. Then we got everything running, and there was a conversation about how we might better track them, but I don't know that we got anywhere.
And then the other issue on the fog, you know, we can't do, obviously, we can't put down reflectors on every street on the roadway, but I noticed like at Klaus Hill, they put yellow wraparounds on the light poles. I assume it's for fog illumination. That might be something that would be a lot easier to do and less expensive of a thing.
Are they reflective? Is that it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Klaus Hill, take a look.
It's taped, isn't it? That's a whole lot cheaper than those that you have to glue into the roadway. They get run over all the time.
Okay. Landing commission meets this, well, next Tuesday, December 2nd, at 4 o'clock here. Beautification and tree board, but we heard from beautification. Anything on tree board?
They were gonna try yard nets.
Okay.
Yeah, that's in my book. I should be able to have something in the next couple of weeks. I've just, I've taken telehummas, telehummas and antiochs and the model ordinance and trying to just put them all together, have something for we can spare us to talk about.
Imagine Mont Eagle, Grant?
Yeah, I'm going to go, before I start on Imagine Mont Eagle, I've got one go back on utility. Received a, an email from a citizen about being overcharged on their water bill. One was at Coke Creek Farm and then Cooley's Rift. They had like a $7,000 and a $17,000 bill. Do we know, I assume that's been rectified? And do we know what caused that meter reading or the meter malfunction? Here you go.
Coke Creek Farm had a leak, a bad leak. So they've had their, they're trying to get it all fixed, but they still had $88,000 gallons on their bill this month.
Are we notifying them kind of ahead of time, letting them know?
I talked to Matt myself.
Okay. And then what about over in Cooley's? There was one individual that got the 7K, $7,000.
I don't know anything about that.
Okay.
It would help if you could forward that email to us.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
And I think, slightly related, thank, I want to thank the CPA for moving to that ledger analysis. It's a lot more helpful. You can, because you can actually see how many billing errors were corrected in the prior month. If you go down under accounts receivable, it shows up. If you go down under accounts receivable, it shows, I think there were seven or eight. So I don't know how to compare that to what a normal month is, um, but they're now in that ledger analysis.
I'll have to look at that little, little deep red, I didn't notice that part of it. Um, for Imagine Mont Eagle, um, just a quick update on a couple of grants. We did not receive a TN 250 grant for the mural. Um, we, we kind of rushed that application, we had one day to put it together, um, but it reopens again November 17th, it's open until mid-January, so we are going to reapply for that and put in a little bit more detail to tie it a little bit better to historical, um, as a, as an historical kind of artifact for the mural on the side of the, um, fire station. Um, so we'll be reapplying for that and changing up some of the language. And I think that, I think we were applying, uh, we applied for 20,000s first time, it needs to be 25 though, so we can cover some other, some other design costs and stuff. Um, on the brownfield grants, I finally got clarification on that. So these brownfield grants come in, um, there's essentially three different phases that you can have with a brownfield grant. One's identification, one is assessment, and then one is remediation. We, we won a $20,000 grant, uh, for identification, uh, which will, what, what we will do is we will, um, hire an environmental engineer that will look at the city as a whole and come up, identify, he'll do whatever, it's, it's kind of a phase one that he would be doing, but he'll come up with any properties that might be suspect and, and would warrant, um, further, some kind of further investigation, uh, see if there's, um, uh, if it qualifies as a brownfield. That particular grant, uh, so it's $20,000, um, it does have a 5% fee built into it for administrative purposes, so the, the city will not be paying any money, there's no match, but the city will not be paying any money to Shelley Daniels, our grant writer, she'll be getting that. The next step for that identification grant is to sign the contract, Mayor. I should have the contract next week. I've looked at a template of the, of the typical contract, but it's, uh, it's, it's long, but it's not that, not really that complicated, but, uh, we should be getting our specific contract sometime hopefully next week. We can sign that and move forward. Shelley will be taking care of putting out an RFQ to get three bids from different environmental engineers, uh, to, to bid on this work as part of the requirement. Um, and that can move forward pretty quickly once we sign the contract. That is a reimbursable grant, as, as are most grants. Um, but I have been told that this particular tenant organization within the state has paid out their, once invoices are submitted, they're reimbursed within, within like seven days or earlier. So, um, so it should be a quick turnaround with us getting our money back. We also won, um, a grant for 90, around $97,000 for the assessment piece, which is the second kind of phase of this brownfield grant. That was awarded for a very specific piece of property. Um, this is a piece of property, Mayor, that I think you mentioned and asked Shelley to put into the grant. Uh, it is the piece of property behind Ball Field. Um, I can't remember who the, who the, it's privately owned. Um, that one is a little bit trickier, so we've got some legwork to do before we would, before we would decide if we sign that contra, contract because it is private property. The process for that would be, um, we'd go out for a bid for an environmental engineer, he would both do both a phase one and a phase two on that property to figure out what is out there and what type of remediation, uh, would need to be done. Um, in order to do that, we would have to, since it's private property, we would have to, there's a process that's, that's very typical with the brownfields. We would do a quick deed, we would have the property owner quick declaim the property to, to the city temporarily, so that we can, um, we can receive the money, do the phase one and phase two, uh, assessment, and then we would quick claim the deed back to the original property owner. And then they, then we would decide at that point whether we want to apply for the remediation grant, which could be upwards of, um, I think two, three or $400,000, depending on what, what is out there and what remediation may cost. So before we move into that, signing anything with that contract, we would need to reach out to the property owner and see if they are amenable to having us do this quick claim deed and doing an assess, the, the assessment on her, on the property, so, um, and if, if they're not willing to, then that's fine, we don't sign the grant, we don't get the money for it and it just stays in private hands. Uh, it would help the property owner eventually if they did want to sell the property to have it, um, at least assessed, um, and then also to have it remediated too, and money is available for that. Again, this is a no-match grant because we're a tier, tier three and four counties, Grundy and Marion, um, and there's an administrative fee built into that too, so it's no money out of the city's pocket for, um, for the administration of the grant. Um, if anybody knows the property owner that we're talking about, I think everybody knows the property. Um, it's behind, it's wrapped around behind the ball field, there's some old equipment back there. Um, there's a, you, I know you know the property owner. Um, uh, it's a lady. It's a, it's a large track, you can access it at the end of one of the roads off Laurel Lake, um, by going through a gravel road, and there's a gravel road that runs all the way back, there's some old machinery, and you end up out there by the Red, Red Roof Inn area.
What, in the sanders?
Mayor, you were the one that brought this piece of property to light, do you remember who the owner is?
I don't.
Okay. Um, we'll look at.
I mean, we could check that, of course.
Yeah, if we could, if we could look, look it up, um, find out who the property owner is, and if anybody on the council knows these people, then it might be better for somebody from the, that's, knows them to approach them about this, uh, about the opportunity and whether they're willing to do the quick claim deed back and forth. So, um, just wanted to let everybody know that, that's, that's where we stand on the current grants that we have in place, at least from Imagine Mont Eagle. Quick question, Debbie, I assume we are a Title VI compliant city?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Shelley and/or Tammy will be reaching out to you for some information for reapplying for the, um, uh, the TN 250 grant for the mural.
Okay.
Any questions? Yes.
What exactly is a brownfield grant?
I'm sorry?
What exactly is a brownfield grant? What do we, what do we, what, what do they work on?
Uh, what it does is it identifies properties that may be contaminated.
Oh, okay.
Underground storage tanks, old equipment, old tank farms, things like that, and then, um, it lets you, uh, understand to what extent it might be contaminated, and as you go further along in that process, you can end up with remediating, remediating the site, so it becomes a clean site.
Okay.
One of the reasons that we were chasing this grant is, uh, we felt like, um, as a ci, a city as a whole, not just the public properties, but a city as a whole, it might be a good idea if there's a red flag that's raised about a particular piece of property that, then we could either notify the private property owner, um, or if it's city property, we would know to take, uh, take some sort of action and lets us know what properties around the city are, are cleanly available potentially, so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, council members on Imagine Mont Eagle?
Thank you, Grant. The only other grant to consider, I think, we're about to close out that CDBG grant and the window opens in early '26, there may be a need to take a look at whatever they're offering. But, uh, once we close that and get a final word, we can take another look at that.
There's a, there's an ARC opening right now as well.
Yes.
We closed the tourism, right?
We did close it. We've closed the tourism grant and working on that as well. Um, okay, alderman report, Dean?
Uh, a few things. Uh, the, the, about the US flag and, and the branches of service, the flag, location for that. Uh, we're interested in asking the city to consider, uh, any site, but one of, one of the, so, we think a better, a, a good site would be adjacent to the library over here, uh, on the east side of the library, uh, extending toward the, the road there. It's, uh, 70 feet wide from, from the edge of the asphalt down to the trail, and then, uh, we would have, have to see what the length was, and then there's, uh, a little bit of fill that would have to be done, but, but, uh, the consensus on, with, with some people, we haven't met with everybody, we were supposed to meet Tuesday, and I didn't get a call on Tuesday or Wednesday, and I didn't get a call on it, so I don't know what happened there, but, uh, anyway, that, that it would be, uh, uh, already have parking available and, and it would be, uh, something that could be tied into the library, uh, and, and used, uh, even with, with the school, Mont Eagle School, when they visit the library to do that, and it would kind of, uh, be, be dedicated to the, the men and women that, that are veterans and, and kind of, uh, uh, what I would say patriots, uh, that have served our country. And, uh, I think, I don't know, uh, who on this council has served in the military, I have it, I know the mayor has, uh, is anybody else? So Mayor, you're, you're the representative, uh, you had, you had 20 years?
21 years.
21 years. So, so, but anyway, uh, that, that's something that, uh, uh, the, the flag pole has been donated, uh, was offered several years ago and it's kind of been stale and we've been trying to get it back going. And, uh, I, I guess, uh, there was some discussion about, uh, down in front of the, the fire department and, and we didn't receive much positive response from that. There was some mention over beside, on the, uh, the railroad property beside, uh, the pavilion and, uh, I don't know, uh, if, you know, about the parking and, and actually who owns that, I, I can't remember how the land swap was done. Nate, uh, do you remember?
Right out here?
Yes.
So the, the Mountain Trail Alliance owns the tree triangle and then the rest belongs to the DeBose Partners, the Land Development Group.
Okay.
Our, the town property begins right at Overton Street and runs over to Bennett.
Yeah, okay, so, so that's not, that belongs to DeBose. I thought the town swapped, uh, to DeBose, uh, to move the, the road over or something.
They did, so the, DeBose Center used to own this and the town used to own that and they swapped.
Okay.
So that's, that's how City Hall came to be in city's property, because it was, it was owned by the DeBose Center, and so that was the swap.
Yeah, this property here was.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Dean, if I may, that's for the service flags as well as the American flag, right?
Yes, sir.
Are you, are you talking about a, I like the idea of the library, um, it seems like a highly visible spot and all, are you talking also about some sort of, um, plaque or, or some kind of structure that would have names of veterans or anything like that, or just the flags?
Well, initially, phase one would just be to get the flags going and, and, uh, I guess there would be, uh, hopefully there would be phase two and three to see what the community wants to do. I think it should be, uh, up to the community if they're willing to, uh, want something and, and work towards that. Uh, there, there's a few communities we've looked at, uh, in Whitwell, they have, they have a nice one, Pikeville, and you can get on the internet and just see them everywhere. And, and so it's just, uh, it's like everything else, it depends on how much work, uh, people will put into it as to what we get, get back from it, but, uh, uh, it, it is the most visible place, uh, and, and electricity for the lights is, is on the poles down there, I've been told, uh, where we can tie in. Tony, what, what, is that just a service where?
Yeah, there's, there's two 200-inch services down there and we've got all kinds of availability for the power for lighting.
And, uh, like I said, uh, when we looked at it, we were just talking about, uh, going out there and, and probably staking off where the American flag would be and then draw a radius around that and, and then this flag off where, uh, the, the branches of service flags would be, and then, you know, look at that and, and make any necessary adjustments and, uh, you can put the flag, uh, beside the building or you can put the flag, uh, over to the right of the building where you're facing it, uh, as you look out the window, uh, there's several, several options to do there. And, and of course, uh, there'll be somebody that don't like either one of them, so, so it's just probably, uh, majority, at least to, to decide, and, and I think we need to, to, uh, try to get started on this. I, I think there's no reason we shouldn't be able to have this, uh, by Memorial Day if, if we, if we wanted to. And so, uh, hopefully, uh, we, we can get that marked off here in the next week or so, let people look at it and get feedback from it. And, uh, then the, the next thing I have is, uh, uh, I guess a question for Debbie, on, on beer, beer licenses, Debbie, do, do people pay that every year?
Yes, it's a renewal.
Okay. And, uh, then, uh, we talked about the streetlights. Uh, I've handed out a personnel policy, that's our current personnel, the council has a copy of that. I would like for us to, uh, consider having a workshop, uh, and going over that and, and, uh, making any additions or deletions that the council thinks in, in the best interest. And, and I think, uh, uh, probably if we can get a draft or something, I, I think, I would like to see the employees' feedback on it, uh, and, and see, and there's, needs to be some specifics to it, but anyway, I would ask, uh, that we consider doing a workshop as soon as possible on it. And then, uh, uh, I was called by Scott Langenfeld, is Scott here, is that you back there? No, that ain't Scott. Uh, anyway, uh, he called me about, uh, the Town of Mont Eagle going out to his residence on Summerfield Road, which is not in the city limits, and, and ultimately he was arrested by a Grundy County deputy and, and taken to, uh.
Pilkington.
Pilkington, yeah. My mind's, you know. That is Scott? Yeah, okay. If I say something wrong of the name, you can correct me. Uh, anyway, he was, uh, uh, the Town of Mont Eagle Police Department was, was to your residence, is that right, Scott?
That's correct.
And, and that is not in the city limits, is that correct?
That's correct.
And my question is, uh, why are we going outside the city limits, uh, for, uh, calls, uh, and, and police departments here and, and, uh, you may want to come up and, and answer these questions?
Sure.
And, uh, uh, in, in regards to the fact that Mont Eagle went on that call, do you have anything to update?
Uh, can you give a little context of the call?
September 17th, uh, Scott had said, uh, Mont Eagle Police came out there and, uh, Cripple Booker Greco came to the, to his residence and, uh, was going, uh, to attempt to get a, retrieve a tractor, uh, I think was, was the word on that, and his two dogs. And, and, uh, I'm assuming we have body cam of, of that if it was an incident?
Oh, I'm, okay, so this is a, a county assist call is what it was?
Pardon?
A county assist, be, do the.
I think, I think Mont Eagle got there before the county did.
That's because, that's why they do an assist, whoever can get there faster. It was a domestic call, called domestic, so it's a priority call. You want, if you have domestic, if a possible assault is occurring, you want the quickest possible response, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct?
If they all have.
So you call your closest law enforcement agency when you're requested, which is basically our job, correct?
Yeah, if, if you're doing.
Yeah, so we have.
If that's the fact.
So if, if a call comes down as domestic, we respond to it as domestic, we don't know what's going on.
Okay, so you, you were dispatched, you've been in the Town of Mont Eagle.
No, no, it was a county assist. Grundy County Sheriff's Office was dispatched. Grundy County Sheriff's Office requested mutual aid due to them being in, uh, further out than us, it was a priority call. So we go and call and stand by and make sure no one's getting hurt, no one's getting injured, no property's getting damaged. So we just stand by, try to make peace until Grundy County can come there and work their call.
Okay, so so 911 would have taken the initial call then?
911 takes the call, they dispatch it, pinged out, out wherever he lives, out of the county, and the county says, hey, can, uh, Mont Eagle assist on it until we get there?
Okay.
And we have a mutual aid agreement with the sheriff's office, so therefore we go out there, which mutual aid is basically an insurance thing, but we're required by law enforcement to assist other agencies. We don't have mutual aid with Tennessee Highway Patrol either, but if Highway Patrol's on the final side of the interstate, do we say, hey, we can't go out there, we don't have mutual aid? No, we're required by post standards to, um, assist other agencies.
So the 911, there'll be a 911 tape of this, this call?
Yeah, there's a cabinet generated, was there an arrest made?
Yes.
Okay, so, so 911 was called, it was mutual aid, it went through 911 dispatch, dispatch sent to Grundy, Grundy requested us, we go on scene, stand by until Grundy gets there, and by knowledge, Deputy Young made an arrest on a false imprisonment.
Yes, I think that's correct, uh.
Was that the call, was the false imprisonment, the arrest?
Yeah, I think that's the, when they got there at the county jail, the jailer told me they'd never heard of false imprisonment.
Well, false imprisonment's a very common thing we have on here, as long as you're out on scene.
Yeah, they say, I mean, county didn't know, I said Grundy County didn't know.
Well, false imprisonment's a very. Well, false imprisonment's a very common law that gets violated when.
And they said the chief of police at Montegoal recommended he be arrested for that charge.
Yeah, I would take, recommend, I would take advice from a senior officer as well if I was, you know, a younger officer. If the chief of police says, hey, this is what you have.
I understand what the facts are is what we're trying.
Yeah, we kick us back forth all the time. You have a younger officer, you have an older officer, you know, you get advice from where you can get it. But yeah, it's common to mutual aid and.
So, why was, why was there a record on scene if it was a domestic dispute?
Well, if a record goes on scene and say, it sounds like it was a civil matter to me. Something about property, whatever. We don't have anything to do with civil matters. But who's there on the scene has nothing to do with us. That man was.
I'm saying that, but it's, seems the common fallback is always, oh, it's a, it's a potential emergency. And I don't think Scott was, were you assaulted, sir?
No, my dogs were being kidnapped.
Well, I recommend him not making any statements.
Right, yeah.
You know, litigation right now, this doesn't make sense.
But if it wasn't him assaulted, it would have had to, the other party would have had to been, and there was no charge for assault.
I can't, I can't, well, you don't have to have assault to get false imprisonment. You leave someone, prevent someone from freely moving about their day is false imprisonment. If you park your.
Attorney General was going to dismiss it.
Well, that's irrelevant on our part, but we were.
It was irrelevant on your part at one time.
What was?
Something being dismissed. So, we don't need to act like it's irrelevant one time and it's not another.
Well, it's not, you didn't ask me that. You asked me as far as us responding to it and what happens after. That was irrelevant as far as that goes. We were, I was responding to your question about us responding to a scene. What happens after us leaving, which we had no charges, is irrelevant to us.
Most of the time we have no business been out there. When you arrive and there's been no assault.
Were you there?
Pardon?
Were you there?
No.
Okay. Do you have all the facts of the case?
I don't know.
Well, you're defending it like you were.
Well, wait a minute. Let's not get too far afield on this. That's what's happened so far. It sounds like ongoing. If there are any further questions.
Well, based on this mutual aid, it's common practice. We do it all the time.
It was a request from the sheriff's department?
Yes, yes, sir.
And you responded?
Did Montegoal, any Montegoal police officer make the arrest?
No, sir. As we, in the segment said, we had 69 other mutual aids this year.
Right. So, Grundy County made the actual arrest.
Grundy County called, Grundy County arrest, Grundy County case.
So, my point is it's real easy to go anywhere you want to go and say it's a mutual aid.
Nah, we only go for requesting. That's it.
If it's requested, thank you. Do you have anything else? Any other ones?
With regard to that?
No.
Yeah, I got several.
Next, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well.
I think I'll just defer a couple of other things to next month.
All right. Thank you. Brian?
I have nothing. Dan?
I'd just like to commend the city workers for all they did in getting things set up for the Christmas and working with the lights and so forth. Thanksgiving and other holidays were well addressed also and a lot of work went into that. And I'd like to thank the fire department for all they're doing. They had a pretty serious call on Friday morning on the interstate and along with wrecker associations that had to deal with that horrific fire also. Glad that there was a lot of, the safety was there for them. Just sort of commending folk that do work that takes care of these things. And I personally appreciate that. It could have been me in the middle of that and I thank them for all they do.
Thank you, Dan. That's a valid point. I'd like to embellish a little bit on that. Flags go up for Veterans Day, flags come down, stars go up and lights go up for the Christmas season. So, there are those that do it and there aren't that many of them that do do it. So, your point is well taken and I'm sure we all join you in commending our employees and first responders, police, fire and EMS. Thank you for that comment. Nate?
Let's see. Last month, we talked a little bit about judge evaluation. So, I did reach out to the legal counsel for M Task and asked the question on evaluation and she said that she would get back to me. Has not yet, but hopefully by the next meeting, we can have some way to understand what, how to evaluate it. I had brought up the idea of offenses against the town last month and I think we discussed it a little bit and then I reached out over the, over the month to see if there was any comments. And I got a couple of comments from a couple of folks. Grant and the mayor both commented. The idea here is that current, the current ordinance that says offenses against the town really only applies to Laurel Lake. And we've had some questions come up about other town-owned properties around parks and people camping out in the parks and how we might deal with that. So, I put together a draft that adds a section on all town-managed property. We said town-managed property because we don't actually own Hart Park, but we do manage that. And so, based on, based on the edits from the three of us, this is where we landed. Now, I need, and probably John may have the answer to this. The mayor wanted to add some language to make sure that nobody was voting within a certain radius of the actual water intake for Laurel Lake. And he wondered if there was a regulation. Do you know if there's anything related to that?
No.
Okay. So, I wanted to bring this up again and have everybody look at and have a conversation about it. I'd like to, if we think it's reasonable and doable, put it in the form of an ordinance for next month and go ahead and amend this so that we have a few more tools for the police to use when we have, we have issues on our, on our public property with folks loitering. Any comments on it? And I know, Dean, you had a comment about what is city-owned property around Laurel Lake. And I don't know that without a survey, we're going to be able to know that absolutely.
Well, I think probably we should at least contact the jointed property owners. I don't think the town should survey, pay for a licensed surveyor to do that. Like on, when we go across to the main part of the lake going, Mike Barry did a survey on a portion of that. And I would assume Lawson's would probably have a survey showing their property and anyone else in between there.
Well, we can ask the individual property owners for their surveys or at least review it. But I believe the town does have a survey of the water plant land mass.
Yeah.
Where it goes into the lake and all that, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, I just, I don't think we can tell people they can't have a campfire or even camp on their own private property.
Certainly not. This is only, only town-owned and town-managed property.
And the water line is, we were always told the only thing the town owned of Laurel Lake besides the plant was actually the water line was the property. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's always been what's been stated.
So, I did pull the deed several years ago. We were looking at, somebody wanted to donate a gazebo to put on the Little Point. And I think it was the question of who owned the Little Point. And the deeds do reference, the transfer deeds do reference the high-water line. I think the issue was that the water, that the dam has changed from the original plan. So, the property was purchased before the lake was built. So, I think it would take a survey to really, to really know for good. I guess, I don't, I don't know that we need to know that.
It's more the access points to the water, isn't it?
Because what it was purchased, some of it was donated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. The deeds, I remember looking at, it's been several years, but there were, there were three different deeds that were all referencing what they thought the high-water line was, would be. And my understanding is that when they actually built it, the high-water line changed.
It changed one time. John will probably remember. The spillway, there was a 288 or 210 put in, just dropped down in the slot.
To raise the water line.
To raise the water line. And to my knowledge, that's the only thing that's ever been done to Laurel Lake.
Well, that, when Jimmy Robins was here, we put that, we put that fuel blower on the far end. Remember, because you got to hide, watch that fuel blower there.
Yeah, the dam inspection people there, that was Ronnie Baganszak and them done a, supposed to knock out that and severe flooding to keep it from dam safety or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we could look at that thing.
Yeah. If people think this is okay, I can get with Debbie and try to get it turned into an amendment to the ordinance so that, again, so that we can have a few more tools in our toolbox.
Thank you.
I was also asked to do some bank stuff, but I think I'll just wait until we get to the ordinance and talk about that. The last thing I have on my list is the sign ordinance. Travis had asked for us to update the sign ordinance. I don't know if you guys have made some progress or if that's something we need to talk about. Just want to make sure that it, it happens.
I agree. And I think that's something we need to talk about as a group.
So, I guess Travis. Travis, you not, you out in the hall or you gone?
He may have stepped out, but I'll get ahold of him and we'll get together on that.
Okay. Does that need to be a workshop?
Probably. It looks like we did the full tour.
Look through the language.
Yeah. I mean, it seemed like, for that, it was just a very simple change. It was like a one-line change to deal with an updated technology. We may want to do something more comprehensive as well.
Yeah, I think we probably need to, we need to have a, probably a workshop because it's, it's a little bit more than just that. I know that's one of the things Mont, I imagine Montegoal was looking to try and tweak some of the language in the signs as well. So, I think a workshop would be worth.
We're talking about a workshop for the sign ordinance?
Yeah.
You and I have had several issues come up and I think we need to review that entire ordinance. So, when the time comes, we need to sit down with the alderman and come up with any suggestions you may have.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Anything else, Nate?
That's it.
Okay. Moving on to old business, I will accept a motion to accept on second reading ordinance 12-25, which is basically correcting the wording of opacity and transparency. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to vote on the second reading of that ordinance change.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? It's been in your packet and we've discussed it. So.
All right. It's moved in second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion on the second reading of ordinance 13-25, the computers that we need for the, for keeping an enterprise system that we've discussed.
I'll make a motion. We accept on the second reading ordinance 13-25, new computers.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion, on that ordinance? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, under old business, second reading of ordinance 14-25, the water and sewer line extension upgrades that I believe Nate added into that ordinance. Is that the same piece, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to accept on second reading 14-25?
So, move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You didn't hear that.
Moving on to new business, first reading of ordinance 15-25, adding exceptions to section 1002, subparagraph A.
What is this?
Which is, excuse me, which is adding additional exceptions in Town of Montegoal. Oh, this covers the additions of buildings with a total gross floor spaces plus or minus a third of the 1,000 square feet. And that also in your packet. 15-25 on the first reading.
It's the 102A.
1002A, yes.
I didn't see 102A in our packet.
It's 15-25.
Yeah, it says it's amending the ordinance to add additional exceptions to section 102A.
No, 1,002.
1,002. But what is 1,002A?
I'm pulling it up here, Dean.
This, I understand, and I apologize, came from the planning commission.
All right. So, these are creating exceptions to site plans. I'm going to bring up section 1002 so everybody can see it. Says, "A site plan shall be required for all commercial, multifamily, industrial, public and semi-public developments and redevelopments in the Town of Montegoal. Depending on the nature, intensity of the proposed land use and when there is uncertainty as to the building setbacks, easements, property lines or utility locations, the enforcement officer or planning commission may require that a site plan be prepared and stamped by a licensed engineer, surveyor or architect. Exceptions, the following issued shall be exempt from the site plan requirements and may instead submit a sketch plan." So, detached, single-family residents, including multiple homes, duplexes and accessory structures. So, that's how it currently read. And so.
Basically saying that you wouldn't have to have an architectural design if it's just a sort of a.
Asking for a site plan.
Yeah, this is small projects. This is exempting site plans for small projects.
So, the sketch would be acceptable.
Sketch would be fine, yes.
So, item five, new buildings with a total gross floor area does not exceed 1,000 square feet. Does that not come into conflict with what we're trying to do with the ordinance? I mean, the zoning stuff, Nate?
No, because this, section 1002 only deals with commercial, multifamily, industrial, public and semi-public developments. So, it wouldn't hit, wouldn't hit regular residential is exempt from the site plan requirement.
Well, but, but aren't some of our, isn't some of that C1 planning going to potentially less than, less than 1,000 square feet for business?
Yes.
So, and this is, this would be a standalone. This doesn't indicate whether it's standalone or not. So, I think we either need to revisit item five or we need to have something in there specific about it being standalone or something because that way, if a new business comes in and it's going to be 800 square feet in one of those little skinnies along the front, along the frontage, then they would not need a site plan, which I don't think is a good idea.
But they would need a sketch plan. So, it's not as though they wouldn't need anything. It's just, it's lowering the bar and keep them having to get an architect involved.
What's the difference between a sketch plan and a site plan then?
A sketch plan doesn't have to be created by a licensed architect. It has to have, I think, all the same requirements.
So, I would, I would want to see the sketch plan definition so that we know that it's got all the things that would be needed in there for a new building.
All right. Let me see if I can do that.
Sketch plan reading.
I'm going to give myself a crick in my neck if I don't bring it back over here. But let's see if we can figure this out.
Is this something we can defer to the next meeting until we get a copy of a sketch, sketch plan and address the new buildings? I mean, it appears to me if you build a new building that you don't have to have a site plan period, if the gross floor area does not exceed 1,000 square feet and the site is less than 10,000 square feet, then you would not need a.
Yeah, that's concerned, Dean. Item five concerns.
Yeah, I see, I see why it does. I mean, we're just seeing this for the first time. So, I think it does make sense to look at it a little more.
So, if we could get a definition for the sketch plan, see how that compares to the definition of a site plan.
I'm sorry, say that again. Define sketch plan?
Yeah, we need the definitions of the requirements of a sketch plan versus the requirements of a site plan.
They probably have a sample we could look at, won't they?
You're asking that of the commission?
Yes, for the, so we have that information for the next meeting.
Hang on. Sketch plans are on page 86 here.
Do we need a motion to defer this or?
Let's see. I do have a definition of sketch plans. Let's. Sketch plans contain less detail than a site plan and do not require planning commission approval. So, I think you're, I think you're on to something. Instead, they may be administratively approved by the enforcement officer. Sketch plans may be prepared by the applicant and do not require a stamp from a surveyor, architect or engineer.
Okay. That has utility implications. It's got all kinds of drainage implications and everything else, even though it's a small building. So, I think we probably need to defer this and take a look at new language for item five.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to make a motion to defer. So I'd like to make a motion to defer ordinance number 1525 from its first reading until the December meeting with new language to be drafted for item number five.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I used to, we used to have sketch plans. Bear Daddy used to draw them out on napkins at the restaurant, so it shows you, I mean, I'm serious. Don Conover can probably remember, and Tony can remember that right over here. He would draw them out on a napkin, and that was the sketch plan.
How all that stuff got built?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Paul Pootie, do you have the names? Okay.
Yeah, I think this can be, this can probably be worked on. It does, the sketch plan must demonstrate full compliance with the ordinance. I'm seconded to defer.
All right, so this, this is a motion, it's taken. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
This is in favor of deferral, right?
Deferral.
Deferral, that's the motion on the floor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The first reading of ordinance 15-25 is deferred until the next meeting. I'll accept a motion on first reading of ordinance 16-25, moving funds into the capital account.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 1625 for the $500,000 transfer into the capital replacement fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Well, I have discussion. I'm not in favor of this transfer for several reasons. I do not see the urgency to do it quickly. I think we can add to the year-end balance at the appropriate time. Once the funds are transferred to the capital account, they can be used only for capital purchases and cannot be transferred out for any other reason. Although you have quoted the controller's suggested amount to continue to the end of the year, I am sure the same controller will take action if we do not make it to June 30th, 2026. As we have done in the past, I would be in favor of transferring funds at the end of this fiscal year based on the account's suggested amount, as we have always done. No one can really predict what the future holds between now and June 30th, 2026. Those are my comments on the motion. Any other comments?
So when we discussed this last, I volunteered to go talk to the banks. It was my understanding from that meeting with the CPA that we're earning 3.5% currently at Mountain Valley. As of today, we are earning 3.6% at Citizens Tri County on our capital reserve account. Renee matched and then did 0.1% higher, so we have that now going forward. I also reached out to Tower. They were willing, if we were interested in moving our capital accounts there, they were willing to go 3.5. If we move capital and general fund, they were willing to do 3.75 on all of it. So that's an attractive offer. You know, the old adage about putting all our eggs in one basket seems, it comes up in my mind, but those are the offers, well, Citizens Tri County is not an offer, it is, it was made effective today, so we, we're now earning 3.6 on our capital reserve account, so if we choose to make this transfer, then that'll also be earning more interest by moving into capital reserve. And I guess while I'm talking, just to speak to the mayor's comments, I think it is the intent to restrict these funds. We are trying to build a rainy day fund for capital improvements in the town of Mont Eagle, and we can't do that until we move them out of our general fund and into capital reserve. And I think we have sufficient funds within our operating account, the comptroller said to, more than sufficient reserves to be able to do this, and I think it's, it's the right thing to do for our children and for the future. It's a, it's a long-term move.
That's right. Everything being equal in a perfect world, I'm not sure the controller is going to hold us harmless if we don't make it to June 30th. I understand their arithmetic, and we have money supposedly to get us to that end date, but I just, I'm not sure that'll happen until it happens. We're already moving the end of the previous fiscal year into that, and I understand the goal, but I don't see why we can't wait. The other part that I just realized, there'd been some discussion of starting a earlier budget analysis and preparing the budget for the next year, so if we transfer what the accountant has said to, we can certainly start our discussions and workshops that I think we had said, starting in January. So that was another reason for my comments. Any other comment on this ordinance 16-25? Roll call, vote please.
Dan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
No.
Okay, I'll accept a motion on first reading of ordinance 17-25, budget amendment to, for the tourism grant.
I'll make a motion, we, on the first reading, accept the ordinance 17-25 on budget amendment for tourist grants.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinance 18-25, purchase of ARs from the drug fund. Is there a motion to accept on first reading ordinance 18-25?
I'll make a motion for ordinance 1825.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes. What are these and what are they used for?
They're guns.
Okay. I know they're guns, but I see them as like, they're machine guns. Do we need a machine gun?
Apparently.
And what's a suppressor?
The question was asked. Sergeant?
Some of them are rifles. They're not fully automatic machine guns. There's some automatic rifles.
What's a suppressor?
It spots the noise down. It don't make it silent like you see on the movies, but it does spot the noise down that comes out of barrels because they are pretty loud.
Okay. And we need to have eight of these?
Yes, sir.
And typically, how often have you, have we used those or something similar to that?
I mean, we qualify with them, but I mean, a lot of times, there's times we work with one person per shift. It gives us an advantage, helps us defend ourselves and defend citizens. A lot of people have these now. Everybody has multiple.
So it's just kind of a standard issue for inventory of firearms?
Not us not having them, it puts us at a disadvantage when we're dealing with people.
Okay.
You have them. We have them right now. They're just in poor repair, is that right? That's what we have.
We have, we have three, I believe, that do not work, they do not function. The few officers here, we carry our own personal ones that we're qualified with, but we don't have any workable, I think the chief has one, this is department issue.
Any discussion on the motion?
How many, we're asking for how many?
Eight.
Eight?
Yes, sir.
And you feel like the suppressors are a needed addition to that?
I feel like they offer a lot of benefits, primarily if we have, you know, if we're in a situation where we have to use them and there is multiple officers, it makes it, we're not going to have time to put our ear protection on like we would at the range, so it makes it where we can still hear each other and communicate without different sounds. God forbid we have a school incident in the school, think about the trauma to other people, the trauma to kids from those loud guns going off. It silenced that down quite a bit.
Does this also help distinguish your fire from enemy fire?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Odd question. My understanding is everything that is bought with drug funds has to be, has to have a sticker on it that shows that it was purchased with drug funds. I know this mostly from patrol cars. Do you have to do that with these? Are these going to be special? And they need to be used directly in, in pursuit of drug convictions, which obviously, you know, there's the opportunity for that. I'm just curious whether you have to put special stickers on them.
There's a decision in your packet from the.
Amts, they made a point on that about that it's allowed in the drug fund.
Okay, okay, I missed that one.
Any other discussion on the motion?
What's the current balance in the, in the drug fund? I didn't look at it. I know it's. Okay, so this will deplete the drug fund?
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayes.
Motion. What?
You passed, you got to vote again.
No, no. They asked me to vote, I'm still.
What was, excuse me, what was your vote?
I just passed on the vote.
You passed on the vote? Okay. One passed on the vote, motion carries on first reading. Okay. We have discussed flow meters and had several workshops with our engineer on water and sewer issues. First item of business, I would need a motion to purchase the flow meter for the Grundy Housing pump station for a total of $7,135.61, and associated software for $1,895.40, for a total, including the SCADA system and all the notification and software, for a total of $9,031.1. Is there a motion to accept that purchase?
I'd make a motion that we accept that purchase.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, is this, all this stuff on this little handout here, page four of A?
Yes, permission.
Is that, okay. And is that something we were going to be able to change and go for the grant when we didn't have to do the pressurized land? Is this something separate from that?
No, it'll be maintained by the town once it's installed, and it'll be installed even after the project. In other words, we're buying them.
And the management engineering reporting final data is almost, is over a third of the total project. Is that, is that normal for that to be that high?
Yes, considering the software and all that, I've had discussion and several suppliers, and these are the specs that the engineer is recommending that we move forward with. It's what we've been discussing right along for the pump station at Grundy Housing.
I think we need to readdress the motion, because I'm fairly confident you said the motion was for 9,000, not 99, not 99,000.
No, $9,031.1.
This is, this is just for certain pieces of equipment out of this list.
Exactly.
This is not the whole list.
If we could listen. It's for the flow meter, which is what I read, for Grundy Housing pump station, and that's the $9,000 item, which has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, the other part, the larger issue, a motion to approve the task order which you received for performing a three-month comprehensive flow monitoring study within the sanitary sewer collection system for a total of $99,350. The funds for the flow study are capitalized as part of the ongoing sewer work in the system. I, the engineer and the accountant have had several phone conversations about this, and it can be capitalized, the work will be spread out, it won't be one check or one invoice for that full amount. So it'll probably be spread out over close to a year. Is there a motion to accept that?
So, sorry, just to understand this better, we're, this, now we're asking for this total list here of 99,000, and you said it's going to be paid for by, by what again?
It'll be a part of the I and I process that we're applying for, that we will be applying for, for as phase two of I and I.
And?
So we're approving the concept, or we're approving that we're going to?
We're approving the purchase and doing the, we're approving the task order.
We just bought the equipment, and now we got to buy it. Do the task order to operate it, it sounds like.
Yeah, because that's the study that we want.
Shouldn't that be done after we get, we know we got the grant, so that we're not committing ourselves to this $99,000 out of our money? Does that matter?
Well, I don't think it matters, because it's part of the grant, we have some part of the grant money already committed.
We've already got the grant money for it? Okay.
So this is going to come out of the capitalized?
Yes.
As our general operating budget, it'll come out of?
It'll come out the capital account, not the for water and sewer.
So it's just reducing that balance by 99,000. Do we know what that balance is right now, approximately?
Not off engine, no, not off engine. We'll get that for you. It does not deplete the.
That's fine, yeah, I'd be, I didn't think it did.
And we think we'll get this money back when we get the I and I grant?
It'll be reimbursable. Any other discussion on the motion?
Sorry, we didn't, I, we didn't get to a motion. I just was trying to figure out what's a motion.
The motion was to approve the task order for the three-month study that we wanted, which picks up, of course, the assembly of Tracy City and Grundy Housing. I mean, this is all that we have discussed for an amount of $99,350.
I made a motion to accept the task order as written for the 99,350 with all of its listed items.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I don't see any, I don't see any monitoring around the assembly. I only see Grundy Housing and Inman. So.
Well, as part of the I and I, they'll review the assembly as well.
If the, if the assembly did that work, Tracy City did the work, and Grundy Housing did the work, so I would think we need to monitor all three of those sites.
That's what we're saying, we're monitoring the three. If they're claiming they did the work, then we want to see what the flow meter was. This is what we've been discussing at those workshops.
I know, I just, I don't see anything about the assembly in here. I only see Grundy Housing and Tracy City.
No, it's, he has expressed to me the town will evaluate the I and I from Grundy Housing, Tracy City, and the Sunday School Assembly. That's part of the task order and subsequent to associated repair work.
But it's not in this document here. Is it in another document?
Well, it would be covered by the I and I grant. I mean, that's all part of this whole study.
It, it only says two satellite systems.
It only says.
Phase two does include assembly.
Page two.
Phase two.
Phase two. Or things too.
So the background on the task order says the town accepts flow from two satellite systems, Grundy Housing and Tracy City, so it doesn't list the assembly at all?
Well, it is the intent to review the assembly as well, because if they all did the work, the reason we're doing all this flows to do that itself.
I thought they had told us one time you could not flow meter the assembly because it had two or three different points coming into the system. Would that be true, John? Multiple points?
Yeah, it goes three, I think.
Yeah, I think we've been told.
For water.
So they, they did temporary flow meters before entering the assembly, because they all tie into that main line, though, right? And so what they did before was they put a flow meter before the assembly and a flow meter after, they captured all the.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, vote please.
Can I ask one question from John before we vote, or is that out of order?
Go ahead.
What's, what's the deal on the assembly, on, if we went back to the fence on, what is that, north central, is where we did the temporary flow test one time? And that's what we would have to do again, and then see what the inflight is at the plant then?
No, because it picks up, if you put the flow meter there, it picks up the other, like coming down.
It's going to pick up all the other customers.
That's really, they need a separate flow meter on there to tell what's coming in, which coming in.
But it has to be on three points, on every point to get an accurate reading.
And one of them was a car wash, and I think it's discha team.
Yes.
Yeah, it's on. I don't think there's nothing on that anymore, but now part comes out from Tower van, but I don't think that's coming from the car.
Okay, how about that is one of the part phases?
So how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Grant? Yes. Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. There being no further business, the next meeting will be January 26, 2026. Thank you.
Hang on, hang on.
I thought we had talked about a December meeting.
A December meeting, yeah, we, we didn't make the decision to cancel the December meeting.
Well, we had traditionally canceled, and I don't see why we can't cancel it, but we had some business we wanted to discuss, and whatever reason, I don't remember what it was.
What were we talking about the other day about this?
Well, I mean, we could talk about offenses against the town, we could talk about sign ordinance, we could talk about the personnel policy.
Yeah, and in that personnel policy, I want to discuss the, the issue that we had in regards to the employee, Avery Merrill, which the mayor had fired, which he did have the authority to do that, but the allegations that he made toward potential issues of altering some kind of flow charge or meter readings or whatever it is.
Misrepresentation of some meter readings.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I think we can, we need either to talk about that or just go ahead and contact the auditor, but that needs to be looked at, if there's potential problems there, and there might not be, but I think we need to, we need to gather the facts.
Well, I've never felt comfortable canceling the December meeting.
But we always have, this, you know, comfortable and uncomfortable.
I think we have enough business, even though it might be a quick meeting, I think we have enough business, we have one, one, two, three, four, four second readings to do, and then this personnel issue, so I think we have enough to warrant having a December meeting.
Okay, so it'll be December 29th?
I think we already busy for around the 15th.
Yeah.
Oh.
Were you talking about a workshop or a...
Just the official business of the city, I mean, this is a four and a half million dollar operation.
I don't think we have time to do workshops at an earlier meeting of the 15th and running into the Christmas holidays, that's why we have traditionally eliminated the December meetings, as you recall. I mean, if you're gonna be all set and ready to go with all your workshops, I don't know when we're gonna schedule this.
Well, I think we can discuss part of that workshop stuff if the city needs, and then even vote on it if it needs a vote. I don't know, what day is, is the 14th, 15th, is it?
15th is a Monday.
I make a motion, we meet the 15th of December at Padapaw, regular December meeting. I'll light a candle.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second this.
Any further discussion? I think it would be inappropriate if we weren't prepared to discuss all that you're talking about, and to turn the city meeting into a workshop, I think is also inappropriate. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Aye. Okay, we'll figure out schedules for the workshops. We're gonna adjourn?
Yes, meetings adjourned.
I'll make a motion, we deserve to adjourn.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.